So, welcome to the Greenfield Budget and Finance Subcommittee meeting. It is December 8th, 2025, 11:01 a.m. This meeting is being recorded. If anyone else present is recording it, you need to notify the Chair, Ms. Kate, at this time. And, yeah, call the meeting to order, roll call, vote.
Here.
Goodwin is here. Chair Martini?
Here.
And, I'm member Childs, I am here. First on the agenda would be the public comment, but at the moment, we have no members of the public in the room, and I'm also not seeing any members of the public on the Zoom. So, if any members of the public were to show up, we could... or is it that? So, approval of Subcommittee minutes. Do you need a moment to look over them again? In that case, can we hear a motion?
I move to accept as presented.
Accept the minutes as presented. And I'll second that with someone on Zoom, roll call vote. Member Goodwin?
Here.
Yes. Chair Martini?
Yes.
And I am a yes, passes unanimously at 11:02. Next is to review and discuss the budget listening input. So...
Do we want to start with yours? Sure. So, I started at Newton School, PTO, November 17th at 3:30. I was there for two hours and stayed for the PTO meeting after the listening session. There were six people present, two teachers, the principal, and three parents. They had requests for additional staffing. One of the concerns was needing a ready-room teacher and instructional assistant so that they had a ready room. They wanted five grade-level instructional assistants. They feel very much understaffed. The need for an additional special ed teacher and an additional reading specialist and full-time PE, art, and music. They also had a question, which I didn't know the answer to, so I brought it here. Our teachers getting new laptops. They thought it had been budgeted last year, but they haven't received. And then there was a concern, which was a need for district-wide literacy planning and evaluation of the new core. So, that was Newton. Then, for Corners, scheduled, the listening session is part of PTO, and it was through Zoom, and that was at December 2nd at 5:00 p.m. There were seven people on screen during Zoom, so if there were people that I couldn't see, I don't know. There were parents and the principal. They had no requests for staffing, no questions, no concerns. A lot of talk about fundraising, and they told me that they would put my email out to parents, which they did, but I haven't received any emails from parents thanks to the PTO. The ALPAC was December 1st at 5:00. There was one parent present who stated that she couldn't speak English, but she had somebody on the phone with her, four students, some of them I knew really well, a teacher and the director of special ed. The request for additional staffing really was to address social studies and science. The class size of 29 in social studies is a problem for our English-language students, like needing help with vocabulary, different things. The kids described not being able to get questions answered because of the class size. The teacher also spoke on behalf of the teachers that the need for additional staffing. So, a social studies teacher, a science teacher. And also brought up funding for professional development to address the Tier 1 supports. And I think that goes back to the fact that we have lots of brand-new teachers who need professional development. And then also funding for family events. They want to do more family events and involve children. And that's what I heard.
Just ask on, says, request for additional staffing, but that was under the ALPAC in certain building?
Middle school.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a middle-school teacher who was there.
Okay, I'll do mine now. So, from the Federal Street School Council, echoing what we've already heard, the top two things were smaller class sizes and more pairs. They are enthusiastic about continuing the restorative justice program that pilot has launched there. That said, they want to make sure that we don't rush it, we do it right, we concentrate on building a solid, sustainable program step by step, rather than just throwing lots of money at it before we give people time to really learn it and know what they're doing and internalize how to make it run properly. They want to see literacy programs that cultivate a whole-school community buy-in, programs that will reach families that don't do much reading at home and encourage their support, make things fun for everyone, readings that tie into other activities, things being learned. Because, you know, you can have the best literacy curriculum in the world, but if you don't have the whole-school community, not just in the classroom, participating, you're not going to get the output that you want from it. They also suggested we look to Shelburne-Buttland's biweekly food backpack program to see if anything they do could make the program economically feasible for us. And then for CPAC, they really want to see professional development for all staff, especially IAs, specifically for standardization and consistency for IEP and 504 interpretation and implementation, for continuity year-to-year, for heading off fraught situations before meltdowns can happen. Just because they, they say that, you know, one person will interpret one way, but then the kid gets to the next class and it's interpreted differently. And when it's this kid who's having trouble figuring out how to read the room, you know, having to constantly go into new room after new room with new rules, new rules, it's difficult for the kids. And on the note of transitions, they want to see stronger year-to-year transitions in general, make time for the teams to meet so that the students' past supports and teachers can fill in the next year's team on the IEP and how to work with the student, just so that it's not starting over from scratch every single year. So, that would be training development, as well as just giving them the time to work on the IEPs with each other. They want to see us retaining staff, and they want us to move from revolving to our consultants and subcontractors to district employees who will stay again for the continuity and for the relationships that they'll build with the kids. They'd like us to explore ways to accommodate our out-of-district placements to bring back as many kids as we can and make our school's culture affirming of neurodiversity. They support the restorative justice programs, development, and expansion. What they highlighted is they want to make sure the non-professional staff get the training on it as well. And they'd also like to see a more robust OT program beyond just fine motor skills, because some of our kids end up getting outpatient for services that are not covered in the school. And the side note they had is they want more engagement between CPAC and the school committee in general, such as representative from us going to them. And I believe they've also put in to speak at our December meeting, and they want to come a few times a year to give reports. But that's not budget finance, that's just positivity from the meeting. Okay, now, Kate, I have what you emailed for the draft of the...
Yeah, I can, I can speak a little bit. Thank you. My voice is a little better today, but thank you anyway for, for facilitating. So, AEL was on the 5th and had a good sizable group. I'm sorry, it was the PTO. And there are some capital-related requests in regards to having a sidewalk where drop-off and pickup occurs over there. There's a need for some clarity about whether, based on the location, that falls on the school department's side or the city's side. And I've already facilitated communication between the superintendent and the AEL PTO president about that. And also a need for adaptive playground equipment over there, so that the playground is really accessible for all students. They emphasized that, the importance of that as an inclusion model program for students with disabilities. I would note that this is the second year running, that they have requested adaptive playground equipment over there. These are, like I said, capital-related, as opposed to operating-budget-related, but I still want to highlight them because they were the, a couple of the main themes. The biggest theme or concern from AEL was, oh, wish for a general commitment to keep AEL open. There seems to be, I don't know, like a rumor mill going about potentially closing AEL, which was a little bit of a mystery to me, because I don't recall that ever being discussed in the last four years I've been on the school committee. But you know how these things go online, so I'm just, it's not really necessarily a directly related budget issue, but it was the main thing that was raised and talked about at that meeting, so I'm just representing that. The GMS PTO elected not to have a school committee representative come to their meeting, but they did put out our, our warm invitation to their membership to please share their input with us, and I made sure they had the budget calendar. So, GHS School Council, GHS does not have a PTO, but does have a school council, which unfortunately was snowed out. So, but I did get some input from Principal Browning that was relayed from the students. So, there is a concern that was raised by a student about a larger class size that she has, not that, it doesn't sound like an across-the-board issue, but an issue for this class and maybe certain classes that have larger class sizes there and the need to, to bring that down. And there is also some nice advocacy from our students for expanded band offerings at GHS and by proxy GMS. So, those were the main themes there. And I would just add that the Federal Street PTO did give some written input, even though they didn't have time for us to join a meeting with them, which was that they support fully-funded programming for the school district, improved staff compensation, and they just wanted to communicate that having a fully-funded school budget allows the PTO to really shine at the extras for enrichment and community building. That's, and that's all I have. Oh, and maybe I should add, we did get an email, follow, a follow-up thank-you email from CPAC, which highlighted the need for professional development for staff for working with neurodivergent students.
Wonderful. So, I suppose what we'll do is we'll go through, because Kate has sent me this, it's similar to what we received as meeting materials for, it's that sort of template, but Kate has already gotten us started with the priorities for 2027 that we can go through to add these things to and pull anything we think doesn't belong anymore. So...
I just changed things like FY '26 to FY '27 and took out things that were irrelevant or what have you, but it's just basic as a template to work from.
Okay, because, you know, there are certain things like continue to fund and support high-quality instructional materials and assessment tools adopted by the district over the last three years. Not sure, does that stay as a priority, or do we consider that a box checked off?
I think it's, right now, it's a box. It's, I don't know, let's, let's hear the rest.
Okay, invested in support implementation of new literacy interventions identified by the district to support students in need of more intensive supports beyond high-quality Tier 1 instruction.
And it's not new anymore.
Exactly.
Six years. So, I, I would like for us to do some district-wide literacy planning and to evaluate what we're doing. What are we doing? Because when you talk to teachers, you hear different things. You hear pros and cons for the new core. I see a lot of purchasing supplemental materials. And then, one, one thing that they did bring up is the amount of time for literacy. So, I heard double blocks, and then I heard I don't like double blocks, so I heard that whole thing. So, I think the number of minutes we're doing, so district literacy planning, which starts with what are we doing? I would like us to engage in that process. And that's just because of where we are right now. We've had, we've spent a lot of money on a new core, so how is it doing? And is there something we can, what are we putting in place to support it? There is no magic bullet for reading in a core. And, but I think it's how it's supported, so I don't know what the supports are that are in place, and they may be different at each school. So, that's the other question. A student, a school that has more ELL kids would have different supports. Our high special ed population needs a whole different variety. And that goes along with professional development, because I think, I think the number the superintendent gave me of, like, 50% of our teachers are young and their toolbox is very limited. So, giving them the professional development to know when to use interventions for students who are learning to read is really important. So, I think it's district-wide literacy planning and funding that can be a lot of money. There used to be grants to do it. I don't know if that's still out there.
Would we want to say, to invest in and support rather than the implementation?
Yes.
We would say, district-wide literacy planning and professional development? And implementation?
Yes.
Good.
Well, I have a question for the superintendent. So, my understanding is that the district has, in the last couple of years since implementing CKLA from K to 7, that the district has engaged in ongoing PD for staff in implementing that and also continued to purchase the consumable instructional materials for it, which was a question in the last year's budget cycle, when we needed to make cuts as to whether to continue to purchase those materials or not. So, in regards to the first item, I would kind of like to keep it, because if we are looking at cuts again this year, I would hate to see those materials go by the wayside. We, we want continuity when we make a big investment in a new, a new instructional resource like that. And I don't know where the PD cycle stands on that implementation. On the second item, my recollection from listening to the Assistant Superintendent is that the district, over the past year, engaged in a process of selecting new evidence-based interventions and has just recently started implementation of UFLI and other resources. So, if that's the case, I, I do want to make sure that the, that new rollout is supported in terms of, in terms of professional development and any materials that need to be sustained. Does that make sense?
A lot of these things that are here, I'm not going to have a lot of background on, and the appropriate time would be, probably not now, because I think he's in a meeting right now, but having Assistant Superintendent Sullivan here, either, if not one of these, but during regular school committee or during meetings, any of these questions, we can then go back and give you, I'm going to say recommendations, but let you know where they stand.
Sure, that'd be great.
So, what if, for the second one, so it's to invest in and support implementation, what if we add comma, including?
Professional development, supplies.
You know what, for that?
Curriculum materials.
Yeah, including but not limited to?
Terms.
Professional development? What else were we saying? Supplies?
Curriculum materials.
Yes.
I think of supplies, I think of pencils and pens, but curriculum materials are...
Okay, professional development.
I also want to be cognizant of staff required, like member Goodwin was saying, and which was raised at some of the listening sessions. I believe there was a mention of a need for a reading specialist who typically delivers these interventions, at least in general education. And, you know, that's a question for the superintendent and Assistant Superintendent as to whether we have adequate positions to deliver.
As written right now, it's to invest in and support implementation, M dash, including but not limited to professional development, curriculum materials, staffing needs, M dash, of new literacy interventions identified by the district to support students in need of more intensive supports beyond high-quality Tier 1 instruction.
That's good.
Okay, the next point is probably pretty solid as is, to support the district's SCL curriculum development and implementation of restorative practices, programming as designed over the past two years. That was something that, you know, came up in mind. I think that's solid. The only thing is, do we want to change the two years to three years? Oh, and on that note, in that first bullet point, I'll change that three to four years.
Actually, it was six years ago we started at the high school, so...
Oh, for the restorative?
Yep. Because I was still working high school, but it was first, and then it worked its way down, so.
Right?
So, we've had training, like, each year?
There was a five-year plan that was developed, wasn't there?
There was.
Yeah, I, I think, when was, I think that was some...
2021.
A year or two ago.
You have, we talked about specific to that, the five-year plan or a general five-year plan?
Wasn't there?
Because there's a, we've attached one to your mint, and that's your, to your packages all the time of 23, I think it was, strategic plan?
Well, I think there was a specific restorative justice five-year...
Yeah, I remember former Superintendent Patton talking about five-year plan specifically regarding restorative practices in the district. Yeah. And that, I think, is a year or two old at this point. I think it's two years old at this point, because it was a year before she started as superintendent. Yeah, so it would be two years.
So, what if instead of over the past two years, we say, you know, as designed in the five-year restorative plan?
Yeah.
So, to maintain art and music opportunities restored in the previous year and support long-term stability and expansion in these areas. The only thing I could think is, do we need to have restored in the previous year in that sentence, or is that...
Like, expand. I mean, we lost chorus.
Oh, we did.
We lost partnerships with, you know, we got swimming at New, but we've lost a lot.
Well, that also wouldn't count as art and music, so...
Right.
So, rather than maintain, so should we say maintain and expand our music opportunities? And I'll cut out the restored in the previous year, because we did lose some. And support long, yep, okay. To ensure that opportunities for activities and programs aligned with grade-level standards and curriculum units are accessible to all students. I think that hits on one of the literacy points that the Federal Street School Council brought to me, so I'm in favor of keeping that. To invest in and adopt high-quality instructional materials for K to 5 science. How are we there?
I don't know, I don't know.
I'm not clear on where we stand there.
I think that's a question for...
I don't know off the top of my head, I haven't seen any of these.
Okay, so, we'll just leave it in there for now?
I think it's a question for the Assistant Superintendent. I don't know where things are at with that. I remember, I remember former Superintendent Patton talking about it, but I don't remember what she said.
To robustly support English-language learners, including support for implementation of the elevation platform adopted in the past year.
That was adopted last year, or, no, I think, yes, it was, it was selected last year, and I think it's just started being implemented this year.
So, I think...
It's fine, but I think I want to be more, this isn't just about ELL, special ed, it's, there's so many different languages, so many different learning styles, it's almost like I want to just say, Greenfield Public Schools will support... Support and provide quality education for all students, no matter their ability, their whatever, you know, an inclusive...
I think that's more, I think that's mission state than budget priority. I think all of our priorities are to that end.
Okay. I'm just kind of, because that framework is just like the beginning. I think that goes along with those Tier 1 literacy, professional development that people have been talking about. The teachers don't have that, even though they've already had SCI, they're still missing that ability to do something different for a child who maybe doesn't know a vocabulary word, speaks a different language, so, okay.
Okay, Kate, did you want to add something there?
Well, I just had a question, because that was there due to some strong advocacy from our staff and ALPAC last year to make that investment in the elevation platform to help them to communicate with general education teachers and make, make classroom content accessible and individualized for, for EL students. Sorry. So, now that it's being adopted, I don't know if it requires ongoing, like, is there, are there ongoing expenses associated with the platform that need to be supported in the operating budget, or no, because it's already been initiated? I don't know.
Professional development that's ongoing.
So, I mean, I certainly want to support it, but, you know, what's required in order to support it? And is there anything else we want to say specifically? Because EL students and students with disabilities are those who have been highlighted over and over in school committee discussions and information presented to us about the students who need, need the most in terms of improving student achievement.
Okay, right now, I have it flagged as...
I just like to see that reflected in there. Sorry, I'll shush now.
No, it's fine, just unlucky Zoom timing. I have it flagged as a question for Stephen to find out what financial operating expenses there, what, what is needed. And then... Yeah. Otherwise... Anyways, the next bullet point is to support movement toward full-year science and social studies instruction, as well as the restoration of foreign language instruction at GMS. That is a very GMS-specific. And so, from the ALPAC, the request for social studies and science, is that specifically?
Middle school, yes.
Yep, GMS. Yep, G M S.
It really has to do with how they schedule social studies and science. And one of the things that has happened over time, middle school, you know, there's a junior high approach to licensure, which is you're a science teacher, five through eight, you're a social studies five-eight. In the last ten years, the state has gone through middle school licenses, like your English and history, science and math, to make it easier to schedule a middle school. And I know our middle school, a lot of the people just have that one subject-specific license, which makes it harder to schedule the building. So that, I think, I don't know if one science and one social studies, that's what they requested, if that solves the problem, because I have you know, the schedule, somebody needs to look at that schedule. I know one teacher has twenty-nine because he made sure all the parents knew that at open house. And the kids talked about that as being very hard to learn in.
But you're also sharing teachers, a few anyway, between the high school and middle school.
Okay.
I, I'm in favor of keeping the bullet point as is.
Okay.
Okay, you wanted to add?
Well, so that making that change is something that was a significant topic of discussion in the past. It got scuttled because it, basically because it would require several new positions and the, our budget increase was already substantial. So that's, I think it aligns with the way kids at, certainly at this age group, middle school age group, learn. It would be more effective for them to have full-year science and social studies, and I want to have that for them, but I'm just being cognizant of the fact that even with our just straight-up contractual increases from our new contracts with staff this year, my recollection is that we're looking at almost two million dollars for an increase. And if we add several new positions to that, that's. I just don't know that, that, I don't know how, what's the word, advisable that is, that's my question for the, and whether that's even something that is being looked at, probably not, right now, that would be my question for the superintendent.
Looking at adding more science and foreign language at the middle school?
Mid-year?
Well, not mid-year, but for next year.
For next year, we haven't even started.
So I am in favor of keeping the bullet point because it doesn't specifically say, we will add these teachers, it is just the general support to it. And I think it's important to keep it there for now, at least, because, I mean, realistically, our seventh graders should be having full-year science. They should be starting their foreign language, especially the college-bound ones. But aside from that, it's on the agenda for the meeting this week to talk about that redistricting, and this was a crucial part of that, so.
Correct.
It's a bit premature to give a budgetary dictate on it now.
I think we start with the wishes. We're not at the pain of cut yet. I mean, it's still the beginning of December. I think we start with, because there can always be trades. I mean, that's the other thing. There may be things that we want to trade for.
For that.
And, and I think that's really what this is about. As a principal, it was always a trade. You know, and you may have to trade, you know, as we go through. So we're just starting, so I think it's worth the conversation. As a science person, I mean, seventh grade life science takes all year, the parts of the self, for goodness sakes. And eighth grade is earth, so, and, yeah. So I think that's important in U S history, but the world, so messed up as it is, I mean, we need to do something. Foreign language is debate, you know, there's big debates because it really should be taught, like in kindergarten and first grade. But I agree, if you want to get to French five or something, you, you need to start early. So. So I think it's something we just start with, and we look at our priorities as we go and then see what happens.
See what ends up being possible.
Yeah, yeah. So I've got to be transparent, we've got to know what we're trading and what we're. It's like the supplies. One, one school said, don't order any more reading supplies because we have a whole closet full. So I think the same number was ordered every year, maybe they're not using the, those things the way. I don't know, how many were ordered?
Maybe we can, maybe we can rephrase that point to something like to seriously consider and maintain focus on the desire to do those two things. Then we don't lose, don't lose that as a long-term goal.
And still. Seriously consider and maintain focus on the desire to support movement toward full-year science and social studies instruction as well as the restoration of foreign language instruction?
Aren't there tonal learning requirements for science and social studies? No?
Tonnal learning for the year.
And not for subject-based? I mean, foreign language is always considered an elective. Science and social studies are core subjects. I will go through the standards and look.
What if we do something like to explore pathways towards development of, or? Well, we clearly need to massage the phrasing on this one, so I'm just going to put all caps, massage phrasing.
Great.
Because I don't want us to just spend twenty minutes on that.
No.
Um, do, so that was the last of those bullet points. Do we have anything that came up from our meetings that we think really is curriculum and instruction that should go there? With the reminder that the next categories are staffing and volunteers, professional development, and transportation. So, because a lot of mine, I think, are P D, rather than.
Right, I think.
Yeah.
So what was this categorizing?
This is curriculum and instruction.
There's two things, I don't know if they exist, this may be another question for Stephen. That all these new teachers, I mean, that number is pretty significant. Is the coaching and the mentoring for, for new teachers? If we're providing, I mean, we used to for the first three years. And then it got away from us, and it was just the first year. So I don't know what kind of support for curriculum that teachers are getting. Okay. Okay, it's still alive and well. Okay. You know, I mean, we may look at literacy coaches, we may look at, I mean, that can go into district literacy planning. I think that's a great start.
Okay, so shall I move to staffing and volunteers?
Yeah, because that's big.
Okay, so our first bullet point is to maintain a level of staffing needed to continue to provide small class sizes and provide individual support students need. My only issue there is to continue to provide small class sizes when we're hearing that we are not providing small class sizes. So I would just cut out to continues, if level of staffing needed to provide small class sizes. And then, because that sentence there covers both, you know, need for more teachers, need for more paras. To consider additional resources that may be necessary to fill needs for substitute teachers. Like, that didn't come up in any of my listening sessions.
That's because there aren't. So we're using our instructional assistants as subs, and you can see it in the money. I mean, it's, it's bottom line is usually, they're just, I mean, I think superintendent Patton said she had like three at one point, and as somebody who's subbing home next week, because there are ten teachers out at the textbook. So I, I would say to you that I think the big thing that needs to happen is our I A's need the same professional development our teachers are getting, so there's consistency. At Newton, they have an I A sub for a third-grade teacher, you know, for half of the year. So I think that's sort of, it would be nice. But I think it's just getting good subs is the issue, getting, hiring and maintaining quality staff. That includes teachers, I A's, and substitutes, so it's more that.
I'm okay with the phrasing of consider additional resources that may be necessary to fill the needs, because that could cover the training of I A's, or it could cover, because that really basically just directs the superintendent to see what will work to fill what we need, rather than being prescriptive.
Okay, so they can have to, okay.
So any objection to keeping that point as is, Kate?
No, I think it's good. My recollection here is that we historically have not paid a competitive rate for substitutes compared to surrounding districts. That means that we have a hard time getting subs, and thus, I A's get pulled for that role. That's a huge problem because instructional aides don't just provide assistance in terms of general education, they actually provide services that students in special education are legally entitled to on their I E Ps. And they need this in order to make progress. And like we mentioned earlier, our students with disabilities are highlighted in terms of need to improve student achievement in the district. So it's an issue and something that I think is a great budget priority, because that's something that can very directly be impacted by the budget. So I think it's great. Should stay.
The next bullet point is to increase and support parent and community volunteers in the district, which I think the, tying into directly from the Federal Street School Council, talking about wanting the whole school community volume for literacy, that sort of slides there. Because, you know, and also the, the community event, the funding for family events. Because, I don't know, it's like, does that count as volunteer if we're getting people in the community to volunteer to help their own kids?
No, 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 too much of a stretch, should I strike them?
I believe we use Title I funds to, to provide.
Book bingo.
Activity, don't we?
We do, book bingo. And then the trivia game at the G M S.
The gym.
And the bike reviews.
My recollection of this issue was two or three years ago, we weren't really, we didn't really have, we weren't making it easy for people to volunteer in the school. And since then, that has, that situation has improved, and I think we have a better process for that. Certainly, Vice Chair Sexton could speak to that, being a volunteer in the district, but I don't know where things, I don't have a good picture, I guess, of where things stand in terms of supporting the volunteers. Do we need to have that be a budget item? That's a question for me for the superintendent.
I, I would almost agree. Kate, in the sense of, are you allocating funds for volunteers, and this is a budget, we're talking about budget, we're not. If that's a whole different thing, like, we need to make it easier for volunteers, I think we've done that, like you mentioned, with the fingerprinting and the query checks, et cetera, incoming in. I'm not sure how it ties in around spending funds for it here.
Yeah, I think it's more community engagement.
But if community engagement doesn't count as volunteers.
Right.
I, I think we did with the reimbursement for the fingerprinting, so I'm okay striking that item. Okay, but something that I would add to replace it is to full, is to support fully staffing our schools, including shifting the contracted positions to district employees. Like what came out from C P A C, how they didn't want us to use the sprout subcontractors to do things in-house as much as possible.
The school psychologists, the behavior.
If I may, yeah. Lately, that's a no-brainer. We only use them when we have to.
Yes.
Have to. We do not choose at all to use them.
And so I guess the question is, what would it take for us to not have to choose, you know, to, what would it take for us to be able to choose not to use them, to have the people?
Applicants, right.
We had the people, we lost the people because we did not, we paid them too early. Yes, we paid them more as instructional assistants than as behaviorists. That was never worked out. We lost some of the best there in Vermont. Yes, we had people who were training other people, we had a train-the-trainer model for behavior happening. And they all left because they could get more money somewhere else. And I don't know where this fits, I would like to fund a full-time grant writer. A lot of these things, grant writers could find funds to help us with volunteers and events.
So what if it's to support fully staffing our schools, including prioritizing and attracting full-time school employees to positions we've previously been forced to use outside contractors and services for? Sound good? Okay, so that was the big one I wanted to put in there. Any other staffing volunteers notes to full-time grant writer?
Full-time grant writer, okay.
I, I'm not so sure about that one. We have grant writing that's specifically under the responsibility of the assistant superintendent. And Stephen did, he did outline his work in, I think, I think in our last school committee meeting, and he also provides information about that every month. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to have an additional salary position to do a job that's already being done. So if folks have suggestions about grants to apply for and things like that, I think they should go to the assistant superintendent. We already have someone doing that.
Well, as somebody who's worked in a few districts, a full-time grant writer, their job is basically in the grants, so it's sort of, really aggressive grant writers know that their their position is in those grants. I, I think it's a full-time job to manage. It really is. If you get up to six million dollars worth of grants, there's a lot of management, there's a lot of paperwork that goes with it. And I don't think anybody can do that along with curriculum and all of the other things we're asking our assistant superintendent to do, but.
Can we put that out as a question to Stephen? As to whether he feels he needs administrative support in order to expand, you know, improve and expand grant seeking?
I'd actually started even typing, ask Stephen what supports he needs. Okay, did it seem, okay, let me just, there we go. Sorry, the monitor here turned off on us. So, yeah, ask Stephen what supports for more grants. And then, you know, for more grants, both applying and management?
Competitive ones.
So what was that?
Competitive grants.
Oh, for competitive grants.
There's entitlement ones which we get, like Title One, but there's also competitive grants.
Okay, so my note here is to ask Stephen what supports for competitive grants, both applying and management. Okay, are we ready to move on to professional development? Um, to provide needed resources to support staff in teaching neurodivergent students. Um, yeah, uh, I mean, for staff there, that includes teachers and IAs, right?
Yeah, I, I added that one based on the feedback from, in writing from the CPAC.
So I think I will just after staff add in. Uh, teachers and supports, we do not support all staff. Yeah, well, instead of support staff, support all staff. Yeah, in teaching neurodivergent children. Um, to provide needed resources to support staff in teaching our English learner population.
Right, so that's the question, another question for Stephen. Have all the IAs who are in the classroom had the same literacy training that the teachers have?
I would assume not.
I would assume not because that is the history of Greenfield, which is, a lot of times those IAs are in the classroom. Um, whether they're covering a meeting or they're subbing for a teacher. Um, I would like to see us invest in funding our IAs because that's also where you can build capacity. Right now, there are teachers teaching in Greenfield who were subs who became IAs who became teachers. So, and they received all that training.
Yeah, I would say we definitely need to have a bullet point that is IA professional development specific. Um, so how do we want to phrase that? To provide.
Provide support for professional development for instructional assistance.
Okay, um, then next one is to support continued investment in advancing our core value of equity, particularly as it applies to. Advance anti-racism throughout our school communities. Um, it didn't come up in the listening session, but it's something that.
We did hear from a student who came to school committee this year to talk about um issues of. Race-based language being used at GHS and GMS and the student efforts to, to address it.
Yeah, I remember last year they, the high schoolers did the presentations at the middle school. So yeah, that's, yeah, let's keep that. Um, to support expansion of restorative practices through professional development for staff at all levels. And related programming for students, which is an easy thumbs up for me. Um, and to support our CPAC in developing parents' capacity for understanding their rights in special edu- special education. And our LPAC in supporting parents of English language learners. Which, um, the only thing I want to see here is some sort of professional development. For standardization of IEP implementation. And something to uh tackle the continuity issues that the CPAC parents are bringing up.
Maybe you want to integrate that with the item regarding PT for neurodiverse, teaching neurodivergent students. And um, that way you could scrap that item and incorporate it. I don't know, that item based on CPAC inputs from last year, so. It doesn't sound like CPAC asked for. Or funds related to. Parent training. This year.
They, they did not. Um, so that first point to. Provide needed resources to support all staff in teaching neurodivergent students, including standardization of IEP interpret. Interpretation and implementation.
That, that gets to the fact that you have. Like twenty different staff members writing IEPs. Who don't have a common language. Um, I think that's what you're trying to say. And that really has to do with um professional development for special ed staff. It also gets back to something else we already talked about is, this bed staff is a revolving door. You know, there's a new one every time you turn around, so.
So if we develop our IAs who are staying more, then they would be able to. See how things are supposed to be flagged and help adjust.
I think that's for um Dr. Messing to, to address that one a little bit.
Can I suggest the term consistency rather than standardization because IAs are individualized. And I, as a, as a parent in special education, I hate seeing something that's obviously a cut and paste. From fifty other IEP in my child's IEP. I, I don't think they should be standardized, but. The implementation of IEPs should be consistent across staff and that is a prob- probably, I don't know, maybe the number one concern. For me and a lot of other parents in special.
Okay, so changing that to including consistency of IEP implementation. Sound good? Because we're supporting the resources, which would be that development. Okay, that's good. Um, and then what did we want to do with the last thing about, the last point we had about developing parents' capacity?
Um, well, CPAC was just getting going again last year and working on creating their annual. Uh, basic rights workshop. Um, but I think that did get off the ground and I don't think it. Like needs to be a budget item necessarily, so, and I don't think they mentioned it this year, so it could probably go.
Okay, I've struck that one from the record. Um, do we have other PD things we want to put here or do we think this covered what was being asked for?
I think it's covered.
Okay. Then our last bullet point was transportation, our last category, transportation. To ensure equitable access to sports and extracurricular activities as well as to increase accessibility. For parent engagement in related district groups and events. I didn't hear anything about transportation at my meetings this year.
I, I can tell you that we have increased. Parent engagement and accessibility by bringing them in. For example, at the open houses. Or middle and high school, we did have buses bringing parents to those who needed pickup. And last week, Thursday evening, middle school had a. A hot cocoa and event here. I was at Franklin Tech for, with our award winner for. Thing I couldn't intend that night, but they had busing as well for families and parents who needed to get here that evening. So we have been providing that.
So if we keep the point, I would just change it to say to continue to ensure. Just so that it doesn't end up on the chopping block. Or at least doesn't thoughtlessly end up on the chopping block just to save money. Because it is important for our community to be able to be engaged. That sound good?
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
So are there any things from the listening sessions that have not made it in that really need to make it in? The only thing I can think of from CPAC would be, um, aside from the more robust OT program, which I think goes under the getting the in-house. Uh, would be the finding ways to accommodate those out-of-district placements and bringing them back. But there is no one quick, easy answer. I think the steps that they have. The other things they've asked for are steps that will create the school culture that affirms neurodiversity and makes that room for them.
I think that's a very long ra- that's like a long-range goal.
Yes.
Um, having, and it's also a sensitive topic. For families that already have a student in and out of district placement. Kids are not houseplants. You can't just move them from one. Place to another, you know, if they're settled somewhere and they're thriving there, they should stay there. Um, unless they, you know, really want to change. And the district has to look at what are the most. What's the highest impact type of programming the district could work to improve? Um, in-house in order to prevent the need for future out-of-district placements. Um, I had a, a former superintendent Pat know did speak to that. Um, and I believe that um she saw opportunities for improving our. Programming for stu- our students in uh. A sub-separate program or sub-separate programming for autism. But that's a, I mean, that's a pretty big. Long-range topic. I don't think it's gonna be solved in our FY27 operating budget, so.
You're missing one topic that I heard all over this town is the bullying. Um, funding bullying prevention programs, um, K through twelve. And they may be able to do that in Title One grants. But we need to make sure that we're addressing that problem, um, and that it's pervasive. It's, to me, it doesn't, restorative justice is a separate thing than addressing bullying. So.
But would bullying go under the SEL curriculum development or should it be a separate story?
I think it needs to be separate because it's, it's being talked about in our community as a problem. Um, class size and bullying, I feel like every door I knocked on, I mean.
Okay.
And those were the reasons parents were giving for leaving our district.
So would we say to support anti-bullying programs? Anything else there or?
I think that's it. It's, there's a lot of.
So I would put that um in terms of order where I have it just, you know, roughed in. Was between the support the district's SEL curriculum and restorative justice and then above the uh maintain and expand art and music. Just in terms of where on the sheet, I.
Sure.
It's not that that order matters.
Sort of goes with whatever our discipline process is, because there's people who believe nobody's. Receiving punishment, bullying. So it's, it's sort of a, what are we putting in place as a framework to address the problem? What are the consequences? Um, and that, I think that needs to be. Out there and people need to know there are consequences and what are those consequences? I know. All got HIPAA and everything else, but I think there just has to be a conversation that something is happening.
Um, but yes, there are.
Right.
Disciplines that are used, yes, here are the possible consequences for any given action.
I looked in our handbooks to kind of like try to, maybe that's a place to really jazz it up a little bit.
So would it, do you support anti-bullying? Oh, sorry, Kate.
Well, I just want to put that in context of the operating budget. Uh, because that's what the document is for. So I think that relates to two of the items that are. Listed there. One is the uh restorative practices. Uh, programming and the other is the anti-racism programming or efforts. Um, so. I think, and when the district is looking at implementing new programming, like if it, say it wanted to implement. A new anti-bullying program, there would be a period where uh. Group would look at options and then um go through a process. To decide what is the best fit for the district and then pilot it in a certain place and uh it's kind of what has. Been happening so far with restorative practices, so um.
An actual law.
How can that be put in the context of the FY27 budget is my question.
Right, but there's an actual law that says we have to provide students and parents access to an anti-bullying. Um, and we did, Greenfield did adopt um second step. Um, I don't know if we still own it or, but it was online on it, which is an anti-bullying program. Um, it's by the Committee for Children. And so there is a law and you're supposed to document it. Um, that every year there's an anti-bullying assembly um for children and you're also supposed to provide it. Um, for parents and that's supposed to be documented. Um, and I think the funding can range from two grand. Um, to, you know, it, it has to be funded. Um, I know some PTO people are trying to fund that kind of thing. As well, but it's something that we should make um a statement in our budget that we. Are going to address it. Um.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Because people in town are pretty clear. We, people need to know we're addressing it. And I'm speaking for a lot of people.
I agree. Uh, maybe the superintendent could help us by um getting back with. Uh, some information about what's currently um on, uh, like what is currently being offered or, or um sought. Or implemented in the district and how can, how can we support that through the FY27 operating budget? Cause then we could. Put in an item that's specific.
Right, that would require a budget. So I'll get you information.
Thanks, that'd be great.
And I'm putting the note there that, that is where that question was. Okay, do we have any other things or are we ready to, I suppose the next steps would be, we've got identified some questions for. Stephen in particular. Um, Kate, do you want me to send him the questions or do you want to do that?
Um, yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Okay.
Thank you.
So our action items are, I will email Stephen. Uh, there was that one thing that was gonna massage phrasing on and I can get this draft cleaned up and sent back to you. Sound good? Okay, so we're ready to move on to the next item. Uh, we actually did uh items. Five and six because we in the process of drafting it. So our second to last item, let's wait for adjournment. Uh, discuss and identify elements for the fiscal year 2027 executive summary budget booklet.
Okay, so that was trying to design a budget that was more transparent than the last one. Think we had that conversation and I don't think they've started to, I know, I know there was steps to unclump things. Or move things around.
We agreed, we agreed at our last meeting that the district would produce a budget booklet. That is comprised of an executive summary and, and that members would come back to this meeting with specific items. They would like to see included.
Yeah, like the specific items you were asking for was building by building staffing numbers.
Right.
So it went to the long run.
Correct. And, you know, because we may get to the point where we have to trade things, so we need to know what we're trading for. Um, and, and that's all in your hands rolling. I think it's, it's really. As a community who's facing another bad budget year, um, with health insurance doing another roller coaster ride. Um, everybody wants to fund, fully fund our schools, but we really have to. We also have to fully fund our water and a lot of other things. And health insurance for our staff is a big, we didn't, we didn't ask our staff last year to put more money into health insurance. I was pretty proud of that, um, because other districts were doing that. So I think. Looking at this carefully to try to make things happen, um, by, but we do need a number. And I have really been, as a math person, want to know a number, like, you know. Where are we? So Kate used the two million if we stay this exactly the same. Um, and I don't know if that's the number that we're going to, you know, what is level funded gonna cost us if we stay the same? And are there things that we're paying for now that. Because of our current lack of enrollment or, you know. Do we have too many somethings at each school um that we could eliminate? And add the things that, like a science teacher or a social studies teacher or a reading specialist. Um, because we have too much of something, which I know is absurd to say out loud, but. Um, because we have too much of something, which I know is absurd to say out loud, but um, with our enrollment in current size, I really feel like a lot of things made sense when we had 300 more children. So I think that's sort of, and the other thing we didn't talk about, and I think there may be a budgetary cost is I know, you know, the fifth grade returning to the elementary school. Will there be a cost to that is a question, and I don't know. Um, that would be a question for the superintendent. And that is a broken promise that Superintendent Harper and School Committee Chair Adrienne Nunes made to parents. We spent a year of our lives on Thursday afternoons in a star committee. First, the fourth grade went back to the elementary schools. We did that. Then the fifth grade was supposed to follow the next year, but we had a pandemic. And then we were trying to fit six feet apart, which didn't work right. So we lost that promise to parents, and that is in this community, that was a promise. Fourth grade returned and then the fifth grade was supposed to return to the elementary school. And I think that's the, the message I got as I walked all over town is there's so many broken promises that, and right now I can, I could list 15 parents who told me if fifth grade doesn't remain at the elementary school, they're going somewhere else. And they would like that decision made. And I don't know if there's a cost to that.
Well, I think there definitely would be a cost, but I think us deciding something on that now is a bit premature.
Right, because they just weren't gonna sure if
Discussing it
Right.
On Wednesday.
Right. So we have a bullet in there that's sort of grade level, can we call it redist, it's not really redistricting, it's grade level reconfiguration. Well, what do you need for?
Kate?
Um, I think in regards to um in regards to what Member Goodwin uh, was saying about um the impact on the operating budget of maintaining our existing um staff and services, I just want to make the distinction that level funding and level services are two very different things. So when we have um, contracted increases and things like that, or to maintain our current staff, that all by itself um, results in a, a substantial increase, of course. And Andy, can you correct me if I'm wrong, please? But I believe that the cost of that for this year was going to be 1.8 billion. Am I way off base?
You're talking to redistricting?
No, I'm talking about the amount to pay our staff for their, their increases in the new contracts for this year. I mean, the long and the short of that is that if we level fund, then we have to cut staff because we can't, you know, we can't aff- afford our contracted increases. Um so I'm, but that goes to some, uh, one of the requests I would like to make um, for the uh, budget book, which is a clear um visual for people to help understand uh, how much of our uh, requested increase is for maintaining existing services level.
Things I would like to see is some kind of visual chart presentation, because that is something where time and time will have people come up and be like, yes, I read the numbers, but it didn't sink in. So, you know, showing what percentage is staff. And then going back to the, talking about staff rebuilding, I'd also like to see students and classroom size projected so that people can see, oh, yes, this is why they have so many teachers here. Or even if it's special ed populations, yeah, yes, this is why we have so many special ed supports in this building because this is what the population looks like. Um, so I think that's what I would like to see and possibly even just a very quick contextualization with some of our dark districts to be like, here's how we compare to similar, so that it's not like Greenfield is this huge outlier. Here's what you can expect from a school district that looks like Greenfield. Those were my executive summary thoughts.
I, the category I'm the most interested in in the executive summary is the per pupil spending um, category, because I think we have had um, the greatest need for communication about that with city council. Uh, and I have prepared a, a list of suggestions or requests for that. Uh, I would love to see a student infographic that depicts the amount funded for teachers, administration, other types of staff, et cetera, per student. I would really like to see a 10-year history of our local contribution per pupil. And a comparison of our overall per pupil spending to the state average. And to, like Member Childs was just saying, I would like to see a comparison to per pupil spending in our surrounding districts, plus the dark communities, which are uh, municipalities that are similar to Greenfield and on multiple metrics. As well as a comparison to a wealthy community um, in Western Massachusetts to help people understand the differences. Uh, and I would like that to include both overall uh, per student spending and that from local contributions. I would also like to see a total
Some of that information because the, when time comes to report to DESI, they just take the total school and, you know, so to divide it up by local versus state is, it's all combined as one.
Right.
I guess unless I don't understand what's your you know, it's one, I was gonna say, it's one bucket when it comes to the actual, what is the contribution? It's, you know, the chapter 70 money goes to the city or municipality and then the local contribution. And they take those two in total to come up with a per pupil amount. It's not divided as local contribution versus state contribution. It's total.
Yeah. I know, but we can divide it up. But I've done, I've done it before to try to understand how Greenfield is keeping up with our surrounding communities and um, how we differ from others. So we can uh, look at our own numbers in order to see how much of our um expenditures are being covered through state and federal aid and how much is um, being covered through local contribution. I will say uh, Greenfield on average funds its students considerably less per student um, than a lot of our surrounding communities and um and that that's been going on for quite a while. And I think that that deficit over time um is really important for people to understand uh, the impact on the schools and student achievement. That's what I'm getting at.
Greenfield, I went to Shen Creek Field for a minute here. Historically has done an amazing job at getting grants, like expanded learning time, like the Discovery School Grant, like giving birth to the virtual school. Um, which kept Greenfield Public Schools alive. So I agree, there have been times where in the history of Greenfield Public Schools, bankruptcy has been around the corner. And it is through the staff who have historically been in our buildings who have found a way to receive funds from somewhere else. Um, ELT brought in millions and millions of dollars to our school system. Um, so we used to have a subcommittee on our school committees called Innovation. And they worked with a grant writer to maintain a level. Um, a superintendent created a virtual school, which brought in millions and millions of dollars. Children signed up all over the state of Massachusetts to be part of the virtual school. And that kept us going during some tough times. So Greenfields, we're a poor community. We've studied poverty. We've, we really you know, making the map in Western Mass. And I'm not afraid to speak to Joe Comaford or whoever about chapter 70 money. But I think you cannot assume that if we raise taxes again for the schools that this community will continue to survive. It will actually become more poverty-driven, um, because we haven't brought in businesses. Um, as a citizen, I've been waiting for more businesses to come to Greenfield. I was excited to see Starbucks and Aldi's come to Greenfield. But until we bring in other revenues for our tax base, um and so, and I'd like to see us bring back families to Greenfield as we continue to lose funding thoughtlessly um, by making decisions that cause us, you know, to lose funding. So, you know, 26 kids in a kindergarten, eight families take off for another district. And yeah, our class size went down, but it cost us a significant chunk of change. So I just, I think one of the reasons I'm sitting here is a taxpayer. I don't mind funding and funding. Schools were always going to be. I've sold more candy bars and written more grants and fundraised more than any human being ever should. But we need to be accountable. That's why this, this has to be transparent. It can't be fluffy. It can't be hiding things. It really has to be transparent. Um and that's, you're not just going in with a number. You need to go in with we have four first grade teachers, we have three PE teachers. We need to know what those numbers represent. And as somebody who's even worked here for 10 years, last year, I, I didn't know what all those numbers represented.
They were under PowerPoint. It just, and then we also had the column of the FTE, the budget document.
Sure.
So
Right.
Information wasn't there.
Yeah.
Is it, is there is the long metal way of a better way to present it?
It's a little more Yeah.
To say that it wasn't there. A hundred percent accurate. It might not have been to Joe and Jane Q. Public out there, readily available.
And that's
But it was the, both the PowerPoint and there is the FTE, um, the budget document.
I like using this executive summary to sort of head off questions. And one of the questions I've seen a lot has been uh, the savings from a vacancy when the position is not filled. So maybe we have something like budgeted for position, but if position unfilled, what the cost to us is with those contractors? If, I don't know how that could be incorporated into an executive summary, but I'd like something in that summary on that point, so that it's not like we didn't hire this position, so we had this extra money to play with. No, that money and more was spoken for in order to meet our legal obligations. If that makes sense. But I don't know if there would be a clean way to do that in an executive summary.
Challenge with that, that you don't necessarily realize that they get to save something. So when we're talking about presenting our budgets, it's a perspective document, it's for
Yeah.
You know, so and then any of those contracts, it's just for costing.
More.
I didn't want to tell you how much more. And we will, but
I know. It's just that is a question we get, so I'm trying to find some way to head it off, but I believe Kate has been waiting really patiently, so.
I just wanted to suggest a, a more organized format for our discussion, so um, based on the draft budget book um, that we looked at last month, the executive summary is sort of broken down into certain sections. And um, if we talked about it in terms of what goes under revenue change, what goes under cost increases and what goes under per pupil spending, I think we could, we could come up with a organized list.
I think it's hard with declining enrollments to apples aren't apples, you know? And so they're not, they're not the same. Want a physics teacher, because you have high school kids. Maybe the physics teacher only, you only have eight kids who are gonna take physics. I mean, it's not and I'm one of those people who's gone back 10 years with the enrollments and, and the budgets and the numbers that the Department of Ed puts out, which is a clump amount of money. I've looked at that. Um, but declining enrollment means you get funded less. Special ed, you know, circuit breaker is a, a moving target. Um, Title I funds a moving target, a failing moving target. Um, so what you get is less because you have less students. Um it's, it's
Well, the last historically, those Student Opportunity Act, they increased the chapter 75, it came to history. So the challenge is going to be, what is the tax with that to, and is that are we gonna be able to sustain it now? Has been a declining increase that we've seen.
Yeah.
The other challenge regarding that is like, and this is where I, I know, just thinking last year's budget discussions. Um the, the challenge we have is that the sending choice and charter tuitions goes towards leading net school spending. So we get that in our foundation debt. Those, those students are in our chapter 75 per pupil number. But it's the amount that they take off the top that ends up meaning less dollars are gonna save or go stay in the district. But they do, they are part of our foundation.
So the charters, school students show up in our foundational budget.
And then the assessment gets taken right off the top, goes to the charter school.
So when I look at those numbers for, for pupil, that's including charter school funds?
He said, if you're, if you're talking foundation enrollment, yes, yeah, and
Well, that's as private as the day is long.
And
And that's how it sounds, credit as a, you know, I mean, I gotta say this. I know one of the things that, you know, the mayor had shown in the discussion last night was the fact that Greenfield is substantially over its net school spending requirement, and it is on the back of the choice and charter sending tuition. And that's
Correct.
And those are, but those are a part of, so that's how they have to say, and Greenfield's not, and there are other communities that are like
Okay.
You know, that, that's how they do it, you know, where, where four million dollars above net school spending, that's great, three of it is going out the door.
And that's because of the way chapter 70 is the formula. Okay.
So in the draft um, that we looked at last month, there is a section for trends and projections related to enrollment. So I'm wondering I, I certainly like that section and would love to include it. That it would include enrollment history, indicators, projections, demographics compared to the state.
How much, because I'm thinking of chapter 70, for the preschool, how much, and I'm not ever gonna say close the preschool. But how much money do we get for preschool? For a preschool student, do we get the full?
No.
That's what I was afraid I was gonna say.
Half?
So like 2,500?
There's probably a 2.5.
Okay. And then it would be really hard to have the preschool cost because we have the kids who pay partial tuition, kids who pay full tuition, half day, full day.
Many are free.
Isn't that based on what services they need?
Correct.
Right, and the law laws. Okay.
Okay. Another chapter seventy failure. Sorry.
Would it be?
We got no. I agree.
I do know. I remember when kindergarten wasn't required. I wrote the kindergarten grant to keep kindergarten alive.
I think Kate wanted to.
I just, I just want to try to keep the discussion organized about creating an executive summary booklet. So maybe it would be helpful if I share my screen and we can look at the draft booklet and members can talk about what they like or don't like.
That would be wonderfully helpful. I just want to make sure that it's set up that you can share, which you should be able to.
I just sent you a request. Okay. Okay, let me see if I can do this. Wait a minute. Okay. This share. Is that, is that working?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so this is the draft that I came up with and we looked at it just briefly the last time. And a lot of it is based off of Worcester because they have an award-winning budget. But, you know, feel free to, to get creative. So this is just a cover page with information about the district and the administration related to the budget. Now, if it were a full budget book, it would include more than just, and it would have the executive summary like this. But then it would also have an organizational section and a financial section and all this. But we decided that it's a multi-year project to do something like that. And we would start with just the executive summary part, which is all that I really put together anyway. It would have a table of contents, of course. Information about the school committee, the members and their roles and things like that.
And we have to have our photos in it.
No, no, totally no. I, this is just, it's a mock-up, you know, based on somebody else's budget book, so that can change. The district leadership information. And then it really begins with the superintendent's message. And then these are the items that I saw were in, at an executive summary. So. You guys can see this, so I'm not going to write it out loud. When you're done with this page, just tell me.
Moving to the speech, one of you. Okay, we're ready to move to the next page.
Okay.
Do we pay our utilities or does the city do it?
City does.
City. Do you want to take that out? Because it's really not our, her view. Just not bring it up.
Okay.
There are areas to watch, I would say, health insurance, because that's the biggie.
Even though the health insurance is paid at the cities?
Hmm.
It's, it's an economic bargaining, won't save you.
It can become part of our, our bargaining, even the percentage staff pay.
Insurance does, is part of our net school spending. So we have to report that side.
Perfect.
Now, will we be able to have projections from the city as to what the school health insurance amount is? That's more of a question for Steve and the mayor, I'd say, but when time comes for this.
Andy, do you, Andy, do you think health insurance as part of net school spending is an appropriate item under areas to watch? Or no?
I would, I would say yes. I mean, but I'd say that's, that's, you know, if, if the city were going to be doing something comparable, they'd put that in there as well. It's areas to watch all over, I'd say.
Yeah. Okay.
No, but honestly, do we have any control? That's where the bargaining comes in as far as all the units in the city agreeing to any sort of change.
Does anybody have anything else? Anything else on this page?
I think we're ready to move on to the next page.
Okay. Okay, so then this is, this would be in visuals, graphics. But it's just a list of the things that would be provided in, in graphics.
So for general fund per pupil, are we talking local contribution or just from the town side budget?
Well, this would provide some visual representations for all sources and chapter seventy for the general fund increase, et cetera. And. This could be broken down any way that we would like.
I think what I would want in the graphic breakdown is also the comparison to the DART and local districts. If that makes sense there to everyone else.
I think.
It might be helpful to put that further down because there's a, there's a part where there's an entire section devoted to this, to per pupil spending. So maybe that comparison could go there.
Well, my only thought is I'd also want the, the DART comparison in terms of, you know, the enrollment and also the employees. Like we had with Karen during her presentation last year, where she put, you know, what the administrative profile looks like at these comparable sized districts. So I guess I wanted, it is more than just the one thing. Unless there's just a different page that is just looking at DART and our neighbors.
Right, DART is hard because you can.
Let me just skip down a little bit. So there's a financial overview for Greenfield. Just skip here. So there is the ben, there's a benchmark data section that covers things like enrollment. And I think this might be, it also covers things like class size, per pupil spending, things like that, where DART comparison might be helpful.
Okay.
So maybe we'll do this.
Like I do think we need to have our, have an administrative comparison with DART because that is an area that the community is always interested in.
Okay.
Also under teachers, teacher mobility. You know, we used to have teachers who stayed here thirty years. And now, I, I, you know, the fact that we're up to fifty percent of them being new, I mean, the pandemic brought that about.
So is that something you would like to see in a staffing history?
I would like to see, yes. It would be interesting to see if you can find another district that's experiencing the same. I'm sure we can.
Do you want to word that? Remember, could we?
Um, I think that where you had staff would be. Professional status, which would mean that they've been working five years. So you could pull up how many professional status teachers we have compared to not. And I think that number explains our need for professional development funds.
Okay.
And I think the state should be funding that.
Okay, so maybe professional status could be part of the graphic representations in staffing. I'm not sure. I mean, I'm not devoted to a whole staffing history section, but I, I like the suggestions that have been made about understanding our percentage of different types of staff and things like that. Opinions? Maybe this should just be staffing and not history?
We, I don't know, I like the history as well.
Likes history also. Okay.
We're facing staffing challenges that we've never had before.
And since, to show what those challenges are to justify.
Spending.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So I put professional status and types of staff here under a staffing section. You can work off of that? Okay. Did every, did you both get a chance to look at this part? Oh, it already says comparison for Greenfield and DART communities.
I'd just like to just make the note of administrative breakdown.
But that would be here under types of staff, right?
Well, I, except I want it specifically the DART administrative like Karen did in her PowerPoint last year, showing what the administrative numbers are like in comparable districts. So it's specifically showing the DART for that. Because I thought the staffing page was really.
Okay.
Oh, I get it, I get, never mind. Don't listen to me, I'm crazy.
How does this look?
Sure, so it looks good.
Okay. Okay. So this would be benchmark data about students. This section, so. Things we like, don't like.
Do we? I think we might want to add, so I see we have the ELs, but we might want to add our special ed or disabilities population just because we are a higher population of high need students. The CEELs, but I didn't see that. And aside from that, everything else looks good to me.
You want to put the percentage in there? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Like we're twenty-four percent or something like that?
Well, because that's one of those things with the charter schools. They're not going to take the kids who have disabilities or high needs, or they'll take them and take their funding, but then they send the kid back to us. So the more kids we lose out of district, the higher our percentage of special needs kids are funding. Yeah, sorry, soapbox.
It's okay. I just. I always struggle with that because it's all very personal. Average class size, the state. I mean, we'd have to do our own because that, the state will give you that, but it's not real because it's just all clumped together. It's like per pupil spending.
Maybe not average class size, then we'll. Like, uh, let's see, class size analysis, if I can spell that correctly. Is it okay if I go down?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then there's this section, which is a more detailed breakdown of per pupil spending. So that would include the infographic that I mentioned earlier about the amount per student funded for teachers and instructional leadership, et cetera, et cetera.
So what are?
Basically, it looks like a, a kid. And then you show like what, how much is, of their funding is going to which things?
Because para pay has been such a big topic. I think I would like the paras to have their own line like teachers do. And I would like some sort of asterisk with other services with a list of what kinds of services we're talking about. It doesn't have to be the complete.
Yeah.
But just so that people know what we're talking about. Like, are they going to think, oh, this is how much each kid pays to do the lawn at the high school? Or is this?
School psychologist.
Exactly.
Okay, so, um, you could put paraprofessionals and then other studies with this with detail in the narrative. There's a narrative box below.
Okay, I just think, you know, having that asterisk so that people can specifically look, direct, you know, direct people to it so that.
Okay.
So this is the amount we're spending per kid, where that money is going.
But that doesn't show the amount that.
Yeah, I was going to say, because not every child has an instructional assistant.
Not on average, though. This is, so this is not a specific kid. This is the amount we're spending for each child and what their attached amount of money is going to. And the only thing it doesn't show here would be how much of the per pupil spending is actually landing out of district. Give the child a suitcase and the suitcase will be the percentage that goes out of district. I mean, it.
Yeah, it would work.
It would be cute.
This. So I think we have to turn the screen back on.
Oh, oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, we'll have it in a moment.
Okay. Is it working? Is it working?
Uh, it is, yeah, we're back.
Okay, okay, there, um, I think everything's in there.
Yeah, next, yep, ready for next.
Okay, now, okay, so then, um, this is about enrollment. So a member Goodwin was suggesting information about enrollment, and uh this section would include.
You know, Richelle's made a pretty draft about that.
Explanation. This would provide a a narrative explanation for people about how enrollment and demographics actually relate to funds and uh the use of enrollment data for staffing. And then there would be this type of um visual representation to show history, um projections, things like that, demographics.
Looks good to me.
I, I would kind of like to um see, maybe superintendent or business manager, um, I don't know what part of this it would be appropriate to put it in, but I would like to ha- put our enrollment history and projections in the context of the region and and enrollment trends, generally speaking. Would you think that would be appropriate under indicators? Or no, because that's, those would be more about our, you know, individual birth rates and you know, things like that.
Five thousand students in Western Franklin County. That's it, I added. But a place where it might get messy are the schools that are banding together and regionalizing. Correct. Well, that's because I added all the budgets up last year, and it was a hundred and eleven million dollars for five thousand kids.
They'll just toss that in there as a separate thing, like regional broader context of enrollment.
Yeah.
Okay. Might, I don't know. Maybe you could fix this, Anne, I can't get that to line up, but okay.
Well, formatting is a problem for tomorrow, us, not today, us.
Okay, um, then there's a section about budget trends. So this helps people understand where have things been, where are they probably going? Uh, with like a gigantic asterisk on the projections, right, Andy?
They need the viewers, right, mystery, yeah. That seems pretty solid and straightforward to me, unless, Andy, you're rolling to see a spot where we would have trouble.
Good with that one?
You good with that page? Okay, then, let's go.
Okay, I think that's, that's it, we reached the end, but let me skip back, because we jumped ahead a little bit before, um, wait a minute, no, this. Okay, so this is right after the Greenfield by the numbers graphics, there would be this overview, this is like the bird's eye pie chart.
Very necessary, very non-controversial, in my opinion.
This would have graphic plus a linear chart plus a narrative, just to sort of get all all brain types on the same page. Okay. And then this is a chart summarizing the budgeted expenses. Any suggestions or additions, changes?
I mean, it looks fine to me, because we break it down in more detail in the next pages.
Yeah, and there would be a table of contents, you know, so folks could see, okay, well, here's the overview, here's the more detailed part. I think that was all. Nope, wait a minute, sorry, there's a summary chart of revenue and expenditures. That compares last year to this year, and the percent and the dollar change.
I really like having a last year, this, this year, next year breakdown, and then the historical separate, so that it's like, this part is the microscope, this is, you know, here are the trees, there's the forest.
Did I miss anything else? I think that was.
Yeah.
Okay, let me see.
Do we have any? We provided, put enough direction?
I think that um, share all materials, because that's like a timing, I couldn't find it, I just had the PDF version, but not that version.
Oh, this one, yes.
You know what I mean, and any materials Kate has obviously before.
Before, yes.
That's, that's just sharing, we can throw it into a file that we all share or something like that, something. And I know she had had some notes from her visits.
Yes, we, we should definitely compile that little folder.
Okay. And then after the school committee's organizational meeting in January, the whatever the new iteration of this subcommittee is, we'll, you know, need to take it up and run with it. But I think it would be really lovely if uh the superintendent and team could uh put together a more informative, accessible document like that to work off.
It's something the community has needed for a long time. Okay, well, if there's no more discussion on that, should we move to adjourn? So moved.
Okay.
Okay, number Goodwin. Here. Yes. Chair Martini.
Yes.
Member Charles, I have a yes, and we are adjourned at twelve fifty-nine PM.
Thank you.